Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It is five o'clock on Tuesday, February 4th, and I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. And we will begin with our invocation. Paul Dean.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. It is truly an honor to be with you tonight. Again, my name is Paul Dean. I am the pastor of Willow Church, which is located just up the road on UU and Jacob's Lane. Previously was known as Christ Center Assembly of God, and we changed the name last year towards the end of summer and early of fall. And a little bit of the story about that name and even a little bit about myself. I grew up in southern Minnesota, so I'm a transplant. I still live across the river, but now pastoring here in the green and gold country. So no offense taken, I'm a Purple fan. But, no, we're glad and we're excited to be there, and I've been there for about nineteen months now. And a little bit about me is I, growing up in southern Minnesota on a dairy farm. So very familiar with the rural lifestyle and some of the challenges that happen within it. And my parents still farm that way and have a few farms as they're getting up into their upper eight, upper years of living. But as we came here, my wife and I, and we came up with this name called Willow, and before we even knew anything about Hudson or ever thought about moving to Hudson, let alone to do ministry, was a dream that we had. And part of it was because the Willow tree is very symbolic and has a lot of metaphors of a Christian life. The fact that the root systems bring stability to the ecosystem and the environment. The fact that you could take a Willow branch, break it off, and within days that stem and that injury to the tree is going to begin to heal. And maybe you knew this, I didn't realize this until I started researching more about Willow trees, but actually they were a precursor to some of their ointment to bring healing to people before aspirin was created, let alone them being planted along the river, which is a type in shadow of us needing the Spirit of the Living God to work with us to help us live the life that He wants us to live, as well as their amazing beauty that they bring to our landscape. So when my wife and I were dreaming of having an organization called Willow, probably about 2012, 2013, little did we know, ten, twelve years later, we would actually be meeting with people looking for a church here. And as we began looking at the landscape of the area here, we found the Willow River was in our backyard. And nothing could truly cause us to step back more than but to think, is God saying to us to have a church here of an organization that we always dreamed about called Willow? And really, that's the point that I want to make tonight with all of you is that we were being led by a vision from God. And I believe that when our lives are led by vision, it truly can impact the world around us and inspire people. It can bring hope to people. It can bring energy and life wherever it goes, especially when it is something that God has breathed within you. So us up the road at Willow Church, we're endeavoring to do a lot of amazing things. And I trust that over the next years, we're going to get a chance to know one another. And who knows what that relationship between us and you guys all here at the county could look like. And we're excited and looking forward to that. But as we look at vision and I look at your wall, is that just simply a sign that's on the wall? Or is that something that is truly embodied and embraced in this room? Is it truly something that, as you guys look at making policies and making decisions, is it something that comes to the forefront of guardrails of making those decisions? To be a county that delivers service, service with compassion and respect for people as well as the environment. At Willow Church, our vision is to reach the St. Croix Valley with the love of Jesus and to inspire and to equip disciples to be influencers of the world they live in. That is what we're about. I believe that this group here, as you embody and embrace the vision that is here before you, if it is truly God-breathed, it will bring radical change and transformation to this county. I'm going to go ahead and pray, and then I'll allow the standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. But Father, I just thank you right now for these men, these women, who've committed time to service of this community. I pray that, Father, you would guide, lead, and direct. That, Father, your Spirit is here to direct. Father, not anyone's vision, but, Father, I believe that you have a vision for this county. You have a vision of what needs to be done. You have a vision of what is needed for all the people here. And, Father, you desire hope and encouragement, life and love to be realized among every heart and soul in this county. So I pray your divine wisdom in this meeting. I pray your divine understanding among each other. And, Father, I pray for unity among everyone, that they're able to move forward together to establish great things here in St. Croix County. And I pray this in the majestic name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
By the allegiance supplied by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as far as roll call, all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Otino and Supervisor Ostness, and also to mention Supervisor Leaf is joining us virtually. Okay, we're ready for public comment. I got a couple cards. First up is Jamie Johnson. Jamie, there you are.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, my name is James Johnson, but most people have known me as Jamie. And I've been, I'm running for the St. Croix County Circuit Court position, being vacated by Judge Black in his retirement after twenty-four years of service to this county. I bring, as a candidate, over thirty-four years of dedication to St. Croix County in both the legal field and our community. During my legal career, which is over thirty-seven years, I have been a criminal prosecutor, a civil litigator, and a mediator. Before coming to St. Croix County in 1990, I prosecuted in Langley and Eau Claire Counties, and I worked as a clerk on the Court of Appeals in Wausau. I've handled complex civil matters and a wide variety of issues ranging from construction disputes, personal injury, real estate, zoning, contractual, and commercial disputes. I have successfully mediated dozens of emotional and sensitive disputes. For many years, I volunteered to give guidance and advice at the free legal clinic put on by the local bar association. And for nearly ten years, I have mediated small claims cases for St. Croix County. And that's over a hundred that would have otherwise gone to trial and used up court resources. Now, even outside the legal work, I consistently dedicated time to serve Hudson and St. Croix County. I've been actively involved in the community through various leadership and volunteer positions at Bethel Lutheran Church, Hudson Daybreak Rotary, the St. Croix Valley YMCA, as I stated, the St. Croix County Courts, and the Hudson School District, including president of the Hudson School Board for the last eleven years. My commitment to justice and my community is central to who I am. And I've been told I'm a good listener, and I have the demeanor and temperament to be a good judge. I was raised on a farm, and I know what hard work is. If elected, I will bring my core values of hard work, dedication, integrity, and fairness when I go to work for St. Croix County residents and businesses. And I would be honored to earn your vote and support. And please feel free to check out my website, which is johnsonforjudge.org. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Okay, next we'll have Brian Smustad. Brian?
Hello, everybody. I know most of you, my name is Brian Smustad. I'm the deputy district attorney for the county. My office is right upstairs. I'm also running for Circuit Court Judge. I've been practicing law for twenty-seven years. Twenty-two of those years have been here in St. Croix County. For the first fifteen years of my career, I was in private practice. I handled cases as varied as you can imagine. Everything from insurance defense to personal injury, employment discrimination cases, federal business litigation, pretty much any type of case you can imagine. I had an office in Baldwin for nine years, and there I handled mostly family law. I handled criminal defense. I served as guardian at Lightham for children in St. Croix County who were caught up in the legal system. And that was rewarding work. But in 2012, my career took a turn, and I decided to enter public service. And what I did in 2012 is I joined the state public defender's office here in Hudson. And at the public defender's office, for those of you that don't know, that office covers four counties in western Wisconsin. And what they do is they appoint attorneys to represent folks that are indigent, that are charged criminally. So folks that can't afford their own attorney, need help, have criminal charges. I represented folks like that for seven years. Eventually, I was promoted to the attorney manager for the local public defender office. And in that time, I had every possible kind of jury trial you can imagine, from homicide to disorderly conduct. I represented hundreds, if not thousands, of indigent people in the county. And really spent a lot of time and effort trying to make sure that folks in St. Croix County received adequate legal representation, because there was a need for that at the time. In 2019, I was offered a job at the district attorney's office by District Attorney Mike Nieskes, who was our former DA. We had done a trial together. It was a homicide, and it was particularly complex and, you know, very, very difficult emotionally for folks. And after that trial, which I lost, District Attorney Nieskes offered me a job. So even though I lost the trial, I think I made an impression on him. And so I joined the district attorney's office. I'm now the deputy district attorney. In the time that I've been there, I've done jury trials on every type of crime you can imagine, including homicide. District Attorney Anderson and I did the Apple River stabbing case, if anybody watched that on TV. We were successful with that case, which was nationally televised. I am in court every single day, sometimes all day. I am intimately involved in the court process. I see what happens day in and day out. I know Judge Black. I've known him for many, many years. I've observed him in his courtroom on almost a daily basis. I know what it takes to replace him. I know what kind of experience it's going to take to replace him. And my combination of experience as a private bar attorney, a public defender, and now as the deputy district attorney is unique. And I'm asking that you vote for me when we get to the primary, which is on February 18th. There are three candidates, I think everybody knows that. Only two will survive the primary, which is in two weeks. So I hope that everybody gets out and votes, and I hope that you vote for me. Thank you. And I do have some information that was going around. I'll give out a few more. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I didn't get any other public comment cards. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to the board? Any other public comment? Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion for consent agenda? Supervisor Shirley to...
Motion to approve.
And second, Supervisor Rice.
Second.
And we're ready to vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, thank you. That motion is approved unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to a presentation this evening from a Chippewa-St. Croix Rail Commission report. Scott Rogers, did I get that name right, Scott? Great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair Long and county supervisors. Appreciate the chance to be here and talk about passenger rail. My name is Scott Rogers. I am vice president, governmental affairs, at the Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce. And the reason I'm here tonight is Robbie Crecci is your representative on the Chippewa-St. Croix Rail Commission, asked to get an update for the board and what's happening with that. I am one of the commissioners, and I was appointed by the chair of the commission to head a committee we have that's working on the study we have under the Federal Railroad Administration. So I'm familiar with that. I'm here to talk a little bit about that. Your packet included a little bit of background information, so that's the first slide that is up here. The Chippewa-St. Croix Rail Commission was formed in 2021, about four years ago, by a vote of three counties and six municipalities, which you see listed here. And the purpose of the commission, which was organized under Wisconsin statutes, is to advance the public interest by pursuing passenger rail service for the St. Croix and Chippewa Valley regions of Wisconsin. A little bit of information about who's active in the commission then. They are the nine counties and municipalities. They also, when it was organized, invited the West Central Wisconsin Rail Coalition to be a voting member. And then there are several ex officio members that have stakes in what would happen going forward. So the Union Pacific Railroad, over whose tracks passenger service would run, has been very active. The DOTs of both Wisconsin and Minnesota, Ramsey County, Minnesota, which owns Union Depot in St. Paul, Washington County, the Regional Planning Commission, and then the five institutions of higher learning in our area, including the three UW universities and Chippewa Valley Technical College and Northwood College. That says Northwood here, and it's Northwoods. No, it is, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. So it is correct. And then Eau Claire County is serving as the administrative and fiscal agent, and Dunn County has been hosting the meetings of the commission. Some of you may know that there's been interest in rail passenger service in our west-central Wisconsin area for quite a while. The reason I throw this up here is that originally Momentum West, the regional economic development organization, formed a committee to work on this. And some of the founders were people who were farsighted but instinctive passed on. So some of you may have known Owen Ayers, who founded Ayers Associates, Bill Leinenkugel, former president of the brewery, Ray Willoughby, a banker in Eau Claire. And they had a long-term vision. And really, the impetus was because of the economic value of having passenger rail for our area and making us competitive in this area. So what took so long? That was over twenty-some years ago. And people say, is this ever going to happen? Really, the thing that's occurred recently is the passage of the bipartisan infrastructure law in Washington. And this is a chart from the Federal Railroad Administration showing the annual appropriations for passenger rail over the last several years. And the five years under the bipartisan infrastructure law, each of those years has more funding than the previous ten years combined. And what it really did was create a pipeline under the Federal Railroad Administration that puts it on a more similar footing as other forms of transportation, with most of the funding formulas being eighty or ninety percent federal funding, and then having an actual path to moving forward on rail projects. So what the FRA did was they created something called the Corridor Identification and Development Program. And they invited states, DOTs, and eligible parties to apply to be part of that program. And this is a slide from Wisconsin DOT that shows the six Wisconsin-related corridors that were accepted into that program. Four of them in Wisconsin, two other ones, actually five of them right in Wisconsin. The two that would be of most interest to us would be number three on this list, which is extending service from Chicago and Milwaukee to Madison, Eau Claire and the Twin Cities, a through corridor. And then the Eau Claire to Twin Cities corridor, which is actually sponsored by the Chippewa-St. Croix Rail Commission. This is a map, and this was in your packet as well, showing where these are. The brown lines are potential bus connections. But the through lines through here are the green and the, I think it's a black line, from Eau Claire to the Twin Cities. And what we have had going in Wisconsin is a very popular and well-used Chicago-to-Milwaukee Hiawatha service that they want to expand further. And you may have heard about the new Borealis train, which was the additional service that was launched back in May between St. Paul, La Crosse, Wisconsin Dales, Milwaukee, and Chicago. And that has far exceeded its revenue projections, sort of showing, revenue and ridership projections showing that there's been a lot of pent-up demand for passenger rail service. So a little bit about the local corridor here that the commission has been sponsoring. This is a little bit of information from the application that went in in March of 2023. The news came out at the end of '23 that the award had been made for an up to $500,000 study. And then the commission hired HDR Engineering to actually undertake that study. It's a consulting firm that has a lot of experience in railroads, a lot of work for the Union Pacific Railroad, and they've been taking that study forward. So in the corridor ID and development program pipeline that you see here, the first three parts of it are something called scoping, and that's actually what's underway right now. So people like Robbie or Mr. Amber, who is the former highway commissioner, would know what scoping is. But it's really to set the stage for the next set of planning, the stuff where you really get into the real planning. So right now, what's happening is a project management plan was created. There's a scope, schedule, and budget that are being finished on that by HDR, and then it would move to the next stage. And that's this one. And this is what a service development plan is. So this is really where you get in the heart of the planning. Essentially, you figure out if you've got something here that's worthwhile. What is the ridership going to be? What is the revenues? What would the capital cost be to put it together? How many trains would you run? And what would be the public requirements for being involved in making it happen? So you'd look at the return on investment and say, is this something that you would want to move forward with? And then there are all the other steps in that pipeline as well. So I did want to mention some things about the study that is underway by the local commission. And it's a little bit unique from other ones that are being done around the country, and there's been a lot of national attention on it in the industry. Really, three things. One is a competitive operator selection. There's not an assumption that Amtrak would be running this, the National Railroad Passenger Corporation. I'll talk about that in a moment. But having a competitive opportunity for people to apply to be part of the program. Another is the relationship with the host railroad, the Union Pacific. They have proposed something called a direct access model, which is a negotiated use of their track aids. And then transportation-oriented development, which really gets into the economic value and making sure that it's a worthwhile project for the community. So the Association for Innovative Passenger Rail Operations is a trade association for companies whose logos you see here who do contract operations of passenger rail service. Most of them are international, and each of them actually carries more passengers and operates more trains than Amtrak does, except you never see their names on the side of a train because they do it on a contract basis. And they say that they will be competitive and transparent in their pricing and provide good value for what they do. I don't expect you to read this, but this is a slide from a presentation Union Pacific made to us at one of our meetings where they have what they propose as a direct access model, which they have capacity on this railroad. It is a Class IV track with positive train control, which you have to have for passenger service. It's not that you're ready to run a passenger train tomorrow, but it would take a lot less upgrades than many other lines would. And they have proposed that if they get a market rate for use of their tracks, that they would not require as much upfront capital to get the service started, which might save quite a bit of money in getting this going. And then finally, transportation-oriented development. We look around the country and see where there has been well-used passenger rail service. And Bloomington Normal, Illinois would be one that is an example where, twelve years ago, they're on the Chicago-to-St. Louis corridor with five trains a day each way. They invested in their station about twelve years ago, and the mayor says they've had about $200 million in economic development around their station. And these are just some pictures from that. And then what about measuring the impact of passenger rail service in the economy? Is it just something we hope happens? This is a map from the new service that just started, the Borealis. And as Wisconsin and Minnesota looked at supporting this service, Wisconsin's annual share of supporting it, about $3.6 million, they've been estimating the economic benefits to the state would be about $25 million. And it may be even more effective than that, given the higher ridership. And then one that's really instructive is the state of Missouri, which supports the Kansas City-Jefferson City-St. Louis corridor with a couple trains a day. They wanted to say, is it worth what we're doing to support this Amtrak service? And it costs them around $9 million a year, and they did a study a couple of years ago where they found that the economic activity that was created by the passengers using that service and doing things around their stations actually created $22 million in tax revenue and over $208 million in annual economic activity. So passenger rail service, like other forms of transportation, does provide some benefits. Here in Wisconsin, we have the Chicago-to-Milwaukee service and the service through La Crosse, but we have a lot of communities like Hudson and Eau Claire and Green Bay and Oshkosh and Madison and others that don't have passenger rail service. And in talking with other chambers of commerce and economic development people around the state, I actually got a call from the Green Bay Chamber about a year ago saying, what can we do to start to move this forward? And working with them, we came up with a statement about why we should consider this. And so it's basically moving forward, looking at it, taking an honest look at why would we want to do passenger rail service, and is it feasible? And so we came up with this statement, asking people to say, okay, do we agree on this? So it would be considering it potentially a needed and worthwhile investment for the economic future, that if we serve more cities, we can retain business and talent. It's a convenient alternative to driving. It can help with economic growth opportunities, increase tourism, and add some resiliency to our transportation system. So I did want to share with you, as we've gotten this going, who some of the organizations that have been involved in this and have said, yeah, we agree with this statement. This is a list of business organizations, so several chambers of commerce throughout the state of Wisconsin and others. These are some of the businesses that have signed on so far, so you'd recognize a few here, such as the Green Bay Packers, the Milwaukee Bucks, Nicolay National Bank, Royal Credit Union, who serves our area. Even Schneider National has said, hey, we would like passenger rail service to Green Bay. And then a number of tourism organizations seeing the value of bringing people to their communities as well as institutions of higher learning and other educational institutions. So I'll mention that the commission meets on a regular basis, depending on how much business there is. Dunn County hosts it. The next meeting is March 19th. There'll be a check-in on where we are with the study. We're expecting by late spring, early spring, we will have the first stage of the study completed. That'll be a virtual meeting, and then there'll be an April 30th meeting where we think we may have some of the information from the study so we can figure out moving to the next step. The next step of the studies, as well as the ones that Wisconsin is working on, is 90% federal-funded. So we are going to have to look at, once we know those figures, look at where the 10% match will come from. We're presuming that the state of Wisconsin is going to want to move forward on its studies. And so we want to be part of that. And we think that'll be something that's realistic, as well as some of our Minnesota partners are interested in helping move this forward. Particularly Ramsey County, which owns St. Paul Union Depot, has been looking at this route, perhaps... route perhaps as its next opportunity to have additional service in there and continue to build a transportation hub there. I do have my email address here, and I'd welcome any follow-up afterwards, but I think the chair is going to allow me to answer questions, too, if anybody has any. I could talk for an hour on this, but there's other things, but be glad to answer some.
Do you want to have questions at this point for Scott? Our supervisor Shirley?
I have a couple of questions. First, looking at the rail stops, it looks like you guys have pinpointed Baldwin and Hudson. Do we, has anybody looked any further in more detail in that?
So that would be that next study. So as we kind of have known where likely stops would be, we put that in our initial application, but actually selecting stops would come in, in that service development plan. You'd be looking at ridership. In this case, Hudson, Baldwin, Menominee, and New Richmond, as well as Altoona, Eau Claire, have all joined the commission, too.
You just talked briefly about the next step includes a 10% of local cost share. And you kind of alluded to it, but are you thinking that the 10% is going to come from the state?
That would be the ideal, the state and perhaps some of our Minnesota partners. But that's something we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it. It's not millions of dollars. We don't have that figure yet, but we think each of these studies, and ours is a little bit shorter corridor, too, than some of the others. We think that, I might be sticking my neck out to give a number at this point, we're waiting for that from the consultant, but we'll have it soon. Probably the, it's probably going to be between $300,000 and $500,000 for all the people to put together and keep that going. You get into the real money later on when you're actually designing services and buying equipment and upgrading tracks.
And one last question. We had the, you had the timeline of all the different steps in there. Do you know roughly, an idea of when the next two steps may or may not happen, a good like rough timeline?
Yeah, the other deliverable from the consultant is the three things they're going to deliver to finish the study are that actually scope of work, what has to be done in this next step, a schedule and a budget. They're saying two years, I think, in the next one. And then you get into preliminary design and engineering, and then that's where you say, okay, exactly what do we have here? And then you move forward. We do understand, what FRA has told us is that if we, if they accept this study, we are automatically in for the next round. We don't have to reapply, and it's not competitive at that point. It's that you automatically move to step two if you successfully complete step three, step one.
Supervisor Barcalo.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming. I had a couple of questions about, and I think Supervisor Shirley helped answer some of them. So you don't have a budget per se yet on what it would annually cost, is that correct?
For the?
For the spur or line that we'd be putting in?
For the actual operation once it's done?
Correct.
Yeah, we're very, very far from having that done.
From getting that. Have you done any comparatives, comparisons to the North Star line, for instance, the one that goes to Big Lake?
One thing, and some of it's in time to talk about some of these things, the North Star is a commuter service, and we're talking about an intercity, like all-day type service. So the characteristics are quite different. You're not depending upon people using it to go to work. It would be for all kinds of, different kinds of travel. Some people might use it for that, and that's one of the things we find out in the study. Interestingly enough, even as those things have changed, and maybe this is a little anecdotal, but it's something we observe in Eau Claire and you probably even more here, a lot of people have moved to our area who can work virtually, that sort of thing, but still have to go to the office once a week or a few times a month. And that might actually be a big market for a train like this, where if they work for an organization in the cities, but they live in St. Croix or Dunn or Eau Claire County, they might use it a few times a month.
Yeah, I think our biggest fear as a community is that this is going to be a multi-hundred-million-dollar boondoggle that will cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars per rider. And so that's something that we would not be on board with, I would imagine.
And actually, I wouldn't be either.
Yeah, I don't want to pay for it either.
We, as a Chamber of Commerce representative, you know, we advocate for all kinds of transportation, but also wise spending. What's been happening with intercity rail is it's been very, very well-used. Amtrak actually, now that they've come out of the pandemic, had record ridership last year, and carefully planned corridors like this are doing very, very well.
Thank you.
Supervisor Carlson?
Thank you. So what is the county board's role in this in the future? Will you have to, will you have to get votes from us or permission, or will it just be presentations?
Well, we're not asking for anything right now, other than you let Mr. Creche continue to participate in the commission. There could be a request for some funding in the future if it's needed. The other, the other thing I didn't mention, and so that next step of the study is, one of the things is governance. So when you go forward with something like this, would, would you eventually, would this commission serve as a catalyst and get things set up? And then another entity like the DOTs would take it over? Or do we go all the way to create a separate governmental organization that hires staff and runs trains and that sort of thing? So it could be somewhere in between that. So I don't know that there's a request to the county board, but as the commission moves forward, just as you're part of any other body that you're a member of, there would be opportunities both to keep updated on it, but there could be decisions to be made about the future of the commission if the commission needs to make decisions. I hope that answered it.
Other questions? Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, Chair. Sir, would you happen to have a possible cost per ticket? And then would you happen to have a travel time from, say, Hudson to Chicago?
Yeah, it's important to be auto-competitive for people to use it. Since we're probably five years away, it's hardest to give a cost because that might change. And typically, trains do some dynamic pricing, just like the airlines do, based on demand and that sort of thing. So I was actually looking at Chicago to Milwaukee recently, and its one-way tickets were somewhere between $15 and $30, depending on which train you took and how far in advance you bought it. I bought a ticket from Red Wing to St. Paul for $7 that I bought a long time in advance. I don't know that that many will be that cheap. From here to Chicago, you usually can, initially, we would do this as a conventional service, which would have speeds up to about 80 miles an hour, which, when you add the stops in, it's a little bit faster than driving, but not a lot. But then you don't have to worry about traffic and parking. So it would probably be similar to driving time to Chicago, but probably a little bit faster once you get it going. The Federal Railroad Administration did a long-term study of what will things look like 20 or 30 years from now, and they, in the Midwest, and they found Chicago to the Twin Cities is the number-one corridor in terms of potential. Now whether that would run through Hudson and Eau Claire or would run through La Crosse, those are kind of decisions that would have to be made in the future, too.
Other questions? I do have one, if I may. Can you speak a little bit about whether or not the study will include any assessment of demand? Because I'm, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like you want to establish the fact that there is demand before you would really proceed with this type of a process. So I'm curious if you can comment on that, please.
Right, and that would be one of the key components of the service development plan, which is the next stage. So that's where you start really getting into those things, and there are methodologies for figuring that out based on other routes that have started. And so that would definitely be part of it, because they would have to come up with some estimates of what would, based on the demand, what would the ridership be, and therefore what would the fares be, and how much would that contribute to the cost of the operation? So those are all things that have to be considered.
That's in the next phase, not the current phase.
Right. Essentially, phase one, we would have, so, and we, I haven't seen all the bills yet, but it's on an up to $500,000 grant, but it's also very, they are very specific as what you can use the money for. So we would have liked to have done a ridership study, and we probably would have had room to do it, but we weren't allowed to do that. So, because we have to do exactly what, what they allow at this stage, and then that comes in the next stage.
Other questions? Supervisor Lynn?
Thank you. Talk about any crime stuff that we're seeing on the, is it the Borealis or are we the Borealis? The, what, the La Crosse one that you currently have?
Yeah, the Borealis is the new train that started.
Okay. What kind of crime are we seeing city to city? Because these are pretty serious cities that are penetrating our state.
Yeah, so the intercity passenger rail service is quite a bit different than local transit services in terms of the ridership and the cost and all that sort of thing. I travel a lot by train. I fly a lot. And I would say that it would be fair to describe train travel and train experiences as very similar in terms of the types of passengers, the safety, all that sort of thing, is very similar to flying. I, I'm also on another state commission where we monitor how things are going. Crime is not really ever comes up as an issue on intercity rail. It's just like flying. You might have an occasional unruly passenger who's intoxicated or something like that, but you don't really have issues of people, actually, conductors run a pretty tight ship. And if somebody is misbehaving, they call the local jurisdiction and they stop the train and take them off. And that, I don't think that happens very often, but I follow it enough to know that it happens once in a while. It's easier to put somebody off a train than an airplane.
So you're saying the conductors are armed?
They're not armed. We do know about that. It probably happens a few times a month in the whole country, but if you're on Facebook pages and you follow things, you hear about those sorts of things. But I've traveled a lot by train and never have felt unsafe. The other, as long as safety comes up, it's the safest form of ground transportation. So the two safest things you can travel on are either a train or an airplane. When I get in my car to leave here, that's one of the most dangerous things I can do.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we're gonna, thank you very much. Appreciate your time, Scott.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to county administrators' report.
The report is in the packet. One of the things I was going to point out was hiring. So 2024, we finished with 171 new hires, which was down from the previous two years of 206 and 210, and back in '23 and '22. So I think that just sort of shows the trend of the labor market, less turnover, so there's fewer new people coming onboard for the county. And then we're working on chief medical examiner interviews. Thank you for Supervisor Adams for participating in that. And then on the tax report, we're still waiting on the last two months. We received those in January and February, but we're tracking pretty close to where we would expect to be for those. Not way over, though, like I like being. Are there any other questions on anything in the financial report that you want to talk about?
Any questions for county administrator? Okay, that was easy. Thank you, Ken. All right, we're going to move on to our business items. And first up, we have a presentation by Tollis Law and Discussion about our role possibly in large-scale solar energy projects. Rebecca, I believe, is here to enlighten us and educate us.
I want to keep my water close by. I do have a tickle in my throat, so in case I start coughing, I don't want to have to run too far. Hi, everyone. My name is Rebecca Roker. I'm an attorney with the Tollis Law. Some of you may know my partner, Andy Phillips, who is a very frequent presence with Wisconsin counties associations, and I may have met some of you before. It's good to see you. And so I'm here today on behalf of the county's association. We, you know, it came to our understanding that there is a very large solar proposal that you are facing. And in talking with Attorney Amos and, you know, with Mark O'Connell and the folks at WCA, they felt very strongly that they wanted to have us come here today and provide you some basic information in terms of what the county's role in regulatory oversight may be. And so with that, and did, I'm not sure if we wanted to take questions along the way, Mr. Chair, or after, however you?
Let's go ahead and do the presentation, and we'll have time for Q and A afterwards.
Okay, that sounds great. All right. Can somebody prompt me how to go forward? Not working. Page up? No. All right, just to give you a general overview and a kind of a note on the presentation itself, some of you may have seen this in some of the WCA's in-the-boardroom presentations or at the WCA Annual Conference. I did change the presentation up slightly to make it more appropriate, you know, for your, your specific county matter. But some of the information in here, I'm going to go through pretty quickly, not only because you may have heard it before, but I really want to leave a lot of time for questions and really get to the heart of our issues tonight. So again, if I speed over some of this, can ask questions later, but I did want you to have the information in here for background. So we're going to do a very, we're going to talk generally about the restrictions on your county regulatory authority, then some of the specific restrictions, and then the most important question, what can you do? So we will dive into that. All right, so let's talk about general restrictions. I don't have on my prompts here my notes in terms of which, which solar farm this is. I believe that this is the Badger Hollow in Iowa County, which I believe is 350 megawatts, just to give you a little bit of, I think visuals are very important with that. So as you probably know, Wisconsin counties are creatures of the legislature, and therefore you can only do, as a county board, what the legislature gives you permission to do. And all of your authority is set forth in Chapter 59 of the state statutes. And so in your, in your authority within Chapter 59, it does give you the right to regulate land use and other uses of the land. However, those are also overlaid by what other restrictions there are in the statutes. And that's where the preemption comes in, which we will get to. But never forget that we are creatures of the legislature, and we can only do what the legislature allows us to do. So again, the theory of preemption, a county may not regulate on issues that are preempted by federal or state law. So what does that mean? If there is a particular issue or a particular topic, let's say renewable energy citing, that the state or the federal government feels is more appropriately regulated at that state or federal level, and they impose regulations, then the local government is preempted from making regulations that are contrary to that state or federal law. And so on issues, we look to whether there's certain elements that are met as to whether a local government, a county, is preempted from regulating. And here you have those four elements, and really, just to summarize, it gets to the question of, does the local regulation conflict with the state regulation? Does the local regulation defeat the purpose of the state regulation? Does it violate the spirit of the state regulation? And I'll tell you, when we're talking about renewable energy, our case law tells us that the policy of the state is to encourage renewable energy. That's what our courts have recognized. So when we've got courts telling us that the statewide policy is to encourage renewable energy, any local restriction that appears to impinge upon the moving forward with renewable energy is going to be deemed contrary to state policy. So right out of the gate, when we're talking about renewable energy for local regulation, we've got an uphill battle. All right, so there's other areas within the state statute, there's several areas within the state statutes that, that go to a county's within the state statutes that, that go to a county's authority to regulate...specifically, we're gonna be talking about solar energy, but some of these apply to wind energy systems as well. There's some, certain provisions in Chapter 700 that talk about solar energy systems being exempt from property taxes. What your land use department can do in terms of reviewing subdivision plots, solar energy systems can impact that process. And then also, the, the local energy resource systems and the construction and building requirements. This goes back to what your county's jurisdiction is under the Department of Safety and Professional Services. So there's lots of interplay when we're talking about solar energy systems and, and other areas of the statute besides the ones we're gonna hone in on. This is just a list of some of the Wisconsin admin codes that also address renewable energy systems, if you can't sleep at night and you wanna review some Wisconsin administrative codes. All right, so let's talk about some specific restrictions on your county regulatory authority. So, we look to Chapter 66 of the statutes, it's the main place where we, where we find those restrictions on local authority. And when we're talking about local, the statutes cover county, cities, villages, and towns. We're gonna obviously be talking about counties. So if you see the term political subdivisions, just know that we're including counties. Solar energy systems is a very broad definition. It basically encompasses anything that you can imagine within a solar energy system. That includes best systems, the better, better, battery energy storage systems. Lots of times, there have been questions about best systems and whether they are a part of a solar energy system. Or can a county regulate a best system independently? Which is a very good question. And the more that the technology expands and the greater need for best systems that are independent of solar energy or renewable energy systems, we're starting to see more independent regulation of those best systems. So we can, I'll kind of put that on the back shelf for now. But that is, you know, when we talk about that solar energy system, it's not until recently that we've even been able to talk about something that is outside of that solar energy system. All right, 660401 is the statute that is the most restrictive and the one that we talk about the most. And this is the statute that explicitly limits the authority for counties to regulate solar energy systems. And we have case law that has addressed what restrictions there are in 660401, 0401. And the Eckert Brothers case, which you may just remember hearing about, the Wisconsin, the court said, I'm sorry, the Court of Appeals said that the ability for a county to regulate in 660401 is basically, it's not an open door. It is a restriction on what a county can do. So the Eckert Brother, Eckert Brother case tells us, again, that it's an uphill battle if a county wants to regulate a solar energy system. All right, let's talk briefly about the PSC process. I did watch the video from your last county board meeting when the representative from Exile Energy was here, just because I wanted a little bit of a flavor of what was presented to all of you and specifically with respect to the process that you have confronting you. The PSC for this type of project, which is 100, it's greater than 100 megawatts, clearly, we're talking, I think it's 650. So we're well over that threshold of PSC approval being required. The PSC process is indeed a very thorough process, as was represented to you. The, the speaker who came before me in talking about the scoping of that passenger project, it's actually somewhat similar in terms of the in-depth nature of how many elements of the environment are looked at within the PSC environmental process, which is great, right? We want a very thorough process. The downside is, is how does the county participate in that? And that's where we need to be the squeaky wheel, to be able to get our voices heard and to make sure that that PSC process does indeed take into consideration all of the issues that your constituents are contacting you about. So yes, it is absolutely a very thorough process, but I will also tell you, once it gets to the PSC and that application is filed, you are hitting the ground running because there is so much work that is done prior to that application being filed. That, and under the statutes, once the application is filed at PSC, PSC has 30 days to determine whether that application is complete. And then once it determines it's complete, the review has to be completed within six months. Six months for a project of this size is a flash in the pan. And so there can be an extension for another six months, which are sometimes granted, but these things move at light speed once they get to the PSC, in my opinion. So we have, it's really important to be having these conversations right now before the application to PSC is made. All right, so again, if it's greater than 100 megawatts, we're at the PSC. And that's also the case under your ordinance, your, your existing ordinance specifically says that you do not regulate solar energy systems greater than 100 megawatts because they fall with under, under PSC review. So once the application is filed at the PSC, the vast majority of the work is already done. And so when the representative from Exile was here and explained, I think he used the term that, you know, you're at step 1B, and I'm not disagreeing with him, but I betcha they're really far ahead in their work. And especially when he, I, I can't remember the percentage that he used of how many land leases they already have secured, it was a pretty high number. That's not step 1B. That's, that, that's pretty far down that scoping process, at least, again, from my, from my humble perspective. So once we get to the PSC, a lot of the work is done. And so then we've got that period of time for the PSC to do its work. And that is when the environmental review process starts. Now, before I started, I used to work at, I was chief legal counsel at DOT. And so when we would do transportation system projects, we had to go through environmental review. And I'll admit, when I was a young lawyer and I heard environmental review, I'm thinking like asbestos, you know, poisons, like water contamination. Yeah, environmental review talks about those things, but really, it looks at the holistic environment. How are, how is our quality of life? How is the quality of life of all of the people living around this, this development affected? And so it really is intended to take a holistic look at all of the different impacts of this proposed development. And that's the type of study that the PSC engages and then utilizes other state agencies for that process. And so they look, again, at that holistic impact on human quality of life. So, in reviewing then, what is that impact? The statute set forth specific conditions that PSC have to look at. And they have to answer yes to all of these questions in order to approve the CPCN, that certificate of, of public necessity, certificate of convenience in public necessity. I always say that backwards. So we have specific statutory boxes that have to be checked. One of those is whether the project complies with local land use restrictions, or what it, what's the project's impact on prime ag lands. And that is a box that, in my experience, sometimes is glossed over. And so one of the items that I really encourage counties and interested parties to do is to be very vocal at that PSC level. So when they're looking at that box, your voices are heard, because otherwise, we can just slide right over and check that box. All right, so what is your role? What is your role at the PSC level? There's no formal seat for you at the table. You can participate as part of the public comment process, which I would encourage you to do. And we've worked with many counties who have taken that approach. We also have been starting to talk with counties about taking a more active approach or a more active engagement. Some counties wish to, you know, kind of really truly have a seat at the table and be an intervening party in the matter. And so some counties have done that. The thing that is nice about intervening in the matter, you actually make a motion to the administrative law judge to intervene as a party, then you are able to specifically comment on all of those eight elements of the statutory requirements. And so you're, you have a much louder voice. The downside to that is there's an expense with it, and there's a much greater level of participation than just a public participation process. But that is one way that you can have a louder voice in front of the PSC. All right, excuse me. The, another way that, that we feel is very effective to have your voice heard, and this is either before, during, and even after the PSC, is with, throughout the joint development agreement negotiation process. Joint development agreements essentially are an agreement between the operator and the county. Sometimes there will be townships that are parties as well, that really set forth the rules of the development. Now, the nice thing about a joint development agreement is you can request items that you do not have statutory authority to require in your ordinances. So for example, one very common one is what roads can be used? What weight levels can be, what type of construction vehicles can they plop on your county highways? What type of permits are needed? Stormwater, erosion control, all of those other things that would generally fall under county jurisdiction, don't. So sometimes, we try to build those into the joint development agreement. Other items that oftentimes that are in there are emergency response plans, insurance requirements. Then we get to decommissioning requirements. You heard from the Exile representative, sort of, you know, a glimpse of that decommissioning process. You wanna make sure that all of that is packed into a joint development agreement. So that's an agreement that you can start negotiating now. I think if you approached Exile right now with that request, I'm not sure what the response you would get, but I can tell you that this now would be an appropriate time to start having those conversations if you wanted to. You certainly can have them throughout the PSC process. But once the PSC issues that CPCN, there's a provision in the statute that says, regardless of local requirements, the development may proceed nonetheless. That's the exact specific language that's in the statute, which means it is much harder to get your voice heard once that CPCN is issued. So we, we highly encourage counties to have that voice, either prior to and during that PSC process, because once the CPCN is issued, it's gonna be much harder to get your voice heard. I'm in a situation right now with one county where the developer has gone dark because the CPCN was issued. And it's really unfortunate. And it's, there's a lot of trust involved in these projects, particularly when you have something this, this scope and size. And so for someone to, to go dark is really unfortunate, so get as much as you can on the front end. All right, I'm kind of jumping around here. So in 660401, when it says that you do have some authority to regulate, it must fall within three categories. It must be, the restriction serves to protect, to preserve or protect the public health or safety. The restriction does not significantly increase the cost of the system or significantly decrease its efficiency, or the restriction allows for an alternative system of comparable cost and efficiency. Again, any regulation that you have has to meet one of these three. And our courts have told us, this is not a wide-open door for county regulation, this is actually a restriction on what you can regulate. All right, this is just a little bit more information on the Eckert Brothers case. There's lots of good nuggets in this case that we lawyers love. It tells us that this has to be, or when you are reviewing a proposal, it has to be on a case-by-case basis. You have to look to individual factors about this proposal. You can't have what they call a cookie cutter ordinance or a cookie cutter regulation, which is interesting when we get into the context of zoning, which we'll talk about in a second. And then there are, there's other provisions in 660401 that also act as restrictions on county procedures. So those are listed for you as well. I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna go a little faster here. Just, I won't read all of these different applications of the case law. But I, again, I wanted to have this information in front of you so you can really understand, if you wanna revisit, you know, the extent to which the county ability to regulate has been withdrawn. And we talk about that application of the regulatory framework, how in these cases, municipal authority has been limited. All right, we talked a lot about Eckert Brothers so far and all of the different elements that we focus in on in the statute, those three, those three elements that any regulation that you do have must be met. But again, that's not an invitation to regulate. And so we always have to be mindful of that message from our courts, that we do not have an open door to regulate solar energy systems. And again, this is kind of, the takeaway from the case law is, just know that it requires a case-by-case approach, no cookie cutter ordinances, and it has to be very clearly defined. And any regulations have to be very specific to the proposal that's in front of you. All right, so jump through. This is more application of the regulatory framework. We do have some more recent case law from the ATC case in Dane County. And really, the takeaway from this case is that local power and local authority is, is restricted. All right, let's talk about what we can do. Wonderful. Again, I don't have, I'm not sure, this one might be what... What's that? Oh, I thought you were hoping for a blank slide. I know, what can we do? What can we do? When I've given this presentation at the WCA conference, there's, I didn't do this on purpose, but my next slide of what can we do has three things, and it has like trimming of vegetation, an access permit to ensure that the person with the renewable energy system has access to their wind and sunlight. And I always kind of feel like it's a slap in the face, like, thanks legislature, thanks, you, you allowed us to like regulate what vegetation can be cut, thanks. And yes, that is, it is, it does sometimes feel that way, like, you know, what have you left us, state legislature? What have you left us to regulate when these constituents are our neighbors and family and friends and who are calling us about these projects? So with that, there are some things that the county can regulate. And I did look at your ordinance, and I think your ordinance is a really good baseline. So you've got that ordinance in place. When it comes to the Ten Mile Creek project, it obviously doesn't apply because it's greater than 100 megawatts. But for other projects, you do have a good, you do have a good ordinance in place. With respect to, let's see, let's talk about zoning. Now, again, different in this instance because your, your ordinance as it exists now does not apply to the Ten Mile Creek project. But let's just say that if it were either to change, or how would your zoning ordinance come into play if you had a project that was less than 100 megawatts? And I know you had, I think it was 20... And I know you had, I think it was 2021, that you had one that was proposed for 99 megawatts. And I love that. It just happens to be 99 megawatts, so they can come in right at 99 and avoid PSC approval. So what happens then? Well, we've got a very specific body of regulation in case law and what we can do with zoning cases and conditional use permit cases. And now we've got this solar energy regulation body of case law. Those kind of come to a head because when we're talking about conditional use permits, there have to be very specific elements and very specific conditions that you adopt that have to be definable and have to be measurable and have to have support by specific data. Whereas with the solar energy systems and that citing, and that case law tells us we can't have a cookie cutter. We have to be very, very flexible and have to have the conditions be very specific to the application. So what that creates is a very challenging system of regulation. And you have to be very careful when you have a conditional use request for a solar energy system to be able to combine those two sometimes competing bodies of law. All right. We talked about the case-by-case approach. What else? I'm going to jump ahead here. Here's our trimming. We can, we can have an ordinance for trimming. Access permits, this is, you, the county can require access permits. I don't get too excited though. It's not access like vehicle access. It's access to the renewable energy source. So an access to the sunlight and access to the wind source. So very, very different than what you would think off, off the top of, off the top of your head. I don't think the county has an access ordinance. That was my understanding from looking. So again, I just wanted to include this information so you have it. All right, let's talk about other options. Some of these you've already, we've already kind of done, if you will. Your ordinance review, make sure your ordinance is sound and your comprehensive planning is all up to date. Again, I did take a brief look at your conditional use permit ordinance and then some of the other materials that Heather had sent me. And so, you know, it, your council has taken a good look at your existing ordinance. Again, in this situation, because the Ten Mile Creek is larger than 100 megawatts, you don't have any regulatory ordinances from a land use standpoint that would, you would be able to apply. Now, option two, start the discussions early. And that's what we, that's what I mentioned before. Meet with the applicant early, meet with XL earlier, as soon as possible. The response may be, no, we're not to that point yet, but ask the question. Try to start those negotiations early and communicate with the PSC. Make your voice heard. If you choose not to intervene, you know, send letters. Do the public comments participate in the public hearing process? So there, you know, like a, like other typical governmental approval process, there is an official public hearing that will be held. But PSC also has a very robust public comment period that you can communicate with the PSC throughout that process. So I highly encourage your participation in, in that process. And then really hone in on what is required of you as the county and then what is required of the developer. Oftentimes, counties are confronted with the proposal that you oversee the decommissioning. That's not required anywhere in the statute, least that I can find. Counties are often the best equipped to oversee the decommissioning process, but that does not mean you have to do it. And if you do do it, you should be compensated for it. And so know if you are, if you are told or you are requested to undertake certain obligations with respect to this project, really have a good understanding of what you are obligated to do under the law and what you're not obligated to do. Revenue sharing. This isn't something I haven't mentioned at all yet. I know that the gentleman from XL touched on it, and it is correct that there is a statutory formula of what the revenue payments back to the county and any participating municipalities would be. So that's certainly an upside of having, you know, a renewable energy development in your community. It can certainly be a source of revenue. Counties, to us, have voiced concerns about, yes, we're getting these revenue payments back, but what about other losses? Either of, you know, other, just the loss of the value of prime ag land. That is always a frequent comment that we hear. Or other development of the, of parcels, you know, other, other higher best use values and uses that may generate more property tax. We don't know. With respect to the negotiation of the revenue amount, the statutory amounts are set, but that doesn't mean that you can't ask for more. And a response from a developer will usually be, well, these are statutory amounts. This is what you get, yes. But as part of that negotiation of the joint development agreement, you can certainly ask for more, do so in good faith, have reasons for doing so, but it's certainly an option that you can, you can proceed with. Other different types of agreements, the, where I have land leased for facilities. From what I can tell of the project in front of you right now, there's not going to be any public lands that are a part of the project. So this is not really an option that may work here for the county because there's no county lands at issue. If there were, sometimes you can structure not only a land use agreement, but then you can have a sort of joint development agreement overlay to that agreement. But again, we get back to that joint development agreement. There is nothing that prohibits a developer in a county or any municipality from coming to the, coming to the table, meeting in the minds, and coming up with a shared agreement. It's really a good old fashioned negotiation. And that's why we encourage have those communications early, have really good information to back up what it is you're going to be requesting in that joint development agreement. But you can ask for really anything. We've, you know, I've seen some very creative provisions in joint development agreements that, you know, there is a need in the county or in the community, and we raise that and how a particular development impacts and exasperates that need. Well, how do we address it then? And then we try to come up with a solution within the four corners of that joint development agreement. So, and then again, the negotiation of the decommissioning, that is really important again because counties are oftentimes the party left holding the bag, if you will, because you have the most resources to oversee that decommissioning. And so you want to make sure that that is addressed in your joint development agreement. All right. Now, questions? I hope I didn't lose anybody to sleep or to my voice that's disappearing.
Gave us a lot to think about. Okay, questions? Supervisor Amber.
Thank you, Chair. Maybe a little, little confused, but what does go dark mean?
Go dark?
Yeah.
Oh, not communicating.
Okay, I thought you were ghosting you or whatever.
Ghosting, yes, yes, exactly.
But then my other question is, I may have misunderstood access permit. I was, there are sometimes it looks like there may be two statutes that speak to the plan that they're working on. And being a highway guy, I'm thinking of the 80s, you know, and access a driveway permit. And if, if they're going to want access here in the plan and the plan is approved before we see it or get to it, there could be safety issues with site distance, like even on the town, they can't put the driveway here but here. And then when they have deer runs or whatever, you know, the access of the deer and deer not reading signs and all that stuff. But, but isn't, isn't the, is that part of the joint development agreements? Or is that just normal for them to come to us? Or do we have to go to them to see that the safety of the driveways and the access permits that are already in other statutes are to be followed by the applicant?
That's a great question. And as a, as a highway girl, DO2 girl, that's what I thought when I saw, oh, we can have access permits. I'm thinking driveway access, you know, to regulate the safety of, of where your access points are. No. So the restrictions in like the chapter 84 in terms of driveway length and so forth, we do not have authority to require compliance with those. So like within your ordinances, if you have driveway restrictions, those you cannot apply. Those are not enforceable.
How about the safety of the traveling public coming over a hill and smashing into them?
No. Nope.
So it can be unsafe?
Well, and the response would be, the PSC is going to look at this.
Hopefully, yeah. Or, so we have to take the initiative to make sure that what their response, what we consider is their responsibility, now we have to take it on?
Yes.
As part of the joint development agreement or something like that?
Yes, but the issue there is you, your, I'll see, you are, your bargaining power is at arm's length in a joint development agreement. Let's say that in this area where this development is going to be, there are serious concerns about driveway access points.
Right.
And you say, look, wait a second, XL, we need to address this in our joint development agreement. These are safety concerns of the traveling public. They could say, no, we don't have to comply with your driveway ordinances. And so then it becomes a negotiation of do they comply? And of course, you know, and I, I believe that they're going to want to do what's best for the safety of the public as well.
What you would think.
But if for some reason there are other circumstances that they don't want to comply or they don't feel they need to comply or they're, you know, their legal counsel says, no, we're, don't comply. So oftentimes it's the, you know, the big bad lawyer who tells them they can't do certain things, even if they want to do certain things. Then no, I mean, that is just a, that's a request that you, that you are negotiating.
Thank you.
What I will say though, is that's why it's so important to get your voice heard at the PSC.
Right.
So we can say, hey, PSC, please, please be looking at these things.
Yeah.
In making your approvals.
Otherwise, it's like telling your kids to use soap when they take a shower.
Okay. Supervisor Barklow.
Help me out, trying to figure out if we could or couldn't do this, but if we were to mandate at some point that the panels going in have to be 100% American made and the parts would have to be 100% American made going in for that production of that facility. And then my other thought was that they have to be a certain efficiency percentage. So maybe they have to be 75% efficient before we allow something like that to overtake our, our farmlands.
I think if you were to adopt an ordinance with those two elements, it would be challenged on the basis that, that restriction, or let me rephrase that. It may be challenged based on the basis that those restrictions significantly increase the cost of the, of the system. And therefore, you can't do it. Because keep in mind, let me see if I can get back to 660401, the language specifically says county restriction either directly or in effect on the installation. So the argument would be your regulation of requiring 100%, you know, domestically-produced panels indirectly affects the cost efficiency, therefore it's not enforceable. I, I'm giving you the worst case scenario. I think, in my own opinion, that we're going to be seeing more of that, of those types of local requirements. Your corporation council was nice enough to forward another county's ordinance that was recently adopted, a solar citing ordinance. And there's a lot in there to unpack. And, you know, I don't know if they're facing any applications right now, but it'll be, it'll be interesting to see how, you know, what's done with that and whether it's enforceable.
Are you talking about at the PSC level? How many applications are going to?
No, at the local level.
Local level?
Yeah.
And what I understand, we're going to be seeing about 350,000 acres put into production for solar facilities in the state, so.
I, there was a comment at the last board meeting by one of you, I apologize, I don't remember who it was, that said there have been no solar developments that have not secured PSC approval for CPCN. And based on my experience, that doesn't surprise me because the PSC is very efficient and they're very good at what they do. And it's very thorough, but it's also a very expedited process, very well greased machine.
Supervisor Van Summeren.
Thank you, Chair. A comment and a couple of questions. The comment is, you mentioned negotiate, but XL I don't think has invited us even to look at it, let alone negotiate with them. So I, I think that might be a, they, they've been through this in many other states. They know what they're doing. We're trying to figure that out. That's the comment. Has any county been successful at stopping something like this in Wisconsin that you know, or even in any state?
In stopping?
Or curtailing or, or?
There have been, I mean, yes, we've had, and I guess that, that begs the question of what is successful? If successful is stop, then no, I'm not aware of any county that has, or any municipality that has, you know, caused the developer to pack up and go somewhere else. I think of like a Walmart, you know, like in, when you're doing land use regulations for large, big box commercials, sometimes if you make it too difficult, they'll just go over to the next community. I'm not aware of anything like that. But there, certainly there have been success stories of being able to negotiate points that are really important to certain communities or to certain counties and so forth, that we've been able to negotiate those. I mean, those are, those are successes. When a county's hands are as tied as they are under this regulatory framework, those I think are successes.
Thank you. And my third question is, I get a lot of phone calls from the people who are living in that area. And what, what can we do? What can they do? And that, that's their question. So what can we do? What can we do? And they would like to turn it over to the county and say, you do it all, but, but that can't happen because we can't do anything. But what can they do? Is, is getting a lot of names on, on a piece of paper, does, does that make the Public Service Commission think maybe we should reconsider this? I'm, I'm thinking, you know, we've got 100,000 people in St. Croix County, 45,000, I'm just throwing that number out, 45,000 names. Would that make them look at this and say, you know, maybe St. Croix County isn't the right place? What, what, in your experience, what, what has been both successful?
Well, I think the, that grassroots effort of the petition, I think, you know, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't say whether that will, you know, be successful. And again, how do we define success? But I don't see any downside to that because it is a way to make people's voices heard, again, at a very grassroots level. Coming to meetings like this, the turnout that you had at your last public comment, at your last board meeting, I think those are very, very important for people to stand up and share their stories and share their concerns. And the more that people can do that, the better. Whether it's, there's no magic thing that people can do to change anyone's mind, other than just keep, like, keep raising their, their voices and make their concerns known. At the PSC level, definitely monitor when the PSC docket, monitor those public comment periods, make sure they get their public comments in. Then it becomes a question of faith is, you know, hopefully the PSC will take those public comments into consideration. But no, I mean, in terms of the, the grassroots efforts, I, I think that's a great thing. You know, anytime people can, can make their voices heard, that's a, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Supervisor Burning?
Thank you for coming and spending your time with us. I don't know where you're from, but I'm sure you traveled really far and you're in the below zero weather, so thank you. I'm going to start off with just a comment, which is, we've got so many different areas of government that have pushed these farmers and these landowners into accepting this offer. You've got the USDA and government subsidies. You've got the USDA and government subsidies from the federal level that don't allow farmers to make money based on their work and what they've produced. They're told what they can make, which in a lot of cases, and we had a couple of gentlemen that spoke at Congressman Tiffany's Town Hall and said, look, you guys don't understand, we're backed into a corner. Farmers, generation after generation after generation, don't make money. They barely make enough money to live on. They have to work a second job. They don't retire with generational wealth from their, their assets that they have, which is land, which is where generational wealth is accumulated, is through real estate and other investments. So farmers have been backed into a corner. Then you've got government tax credits coming on these solar developments into agricultural land that's been preserved. And now these, the, the farmers, and not all of them are poor and not all of them are backed into a corner, but there's some that have to take it to get this generational wealth. So you've got a government subsidy or a tax credit, whatever you want to call it, being used to offset probably terrible, terrible, what would you call it? Policy on how we handle our farmers over the years. And now you take that, you, now you've got a highly regulated monopoly in utilities in the state of Wisconsin. And you've got states across the country going to unregulated, right? You're, you're opening up the markets for resellers, just like the Telecommunications Act of ninety-six, like when they broke up the Bell Companies in the eighties to take away forty dollars, forty dollars a minute in long distance charges. Now, I don't remember that, but I can remember fights with my parents. No, I'm just kidding. But you could remember these things and deregulation opened up the market and competition. You got the birth of the internet, you know, right? I downloaded my first picture of Penny Hardaway dunking the basketball in nineteen ninety-four on dial. It took five minutes to download it and I, I still have that printout, by the way. So we're, we're sitting here with farmers being pushed in a corner, landowners being pushed in a corner because of regulation, not being able to make the money that they want with the product that they, they create. You've got a public utility that is daunting and hovering over us. And basically, now that we're looking at all this going, we can pretty much do whatever we want as long as the PSC and whoever's in control, controls that. And then you've got federal tax credits that if they expire and get pulled out, this is going to cost consumers a lot more money if some of these tax credits end up getting pulled by, by Congress and the, and the Senate and the president signs it into law and they pull back these, these subsidies. So I'm, what I'm getting at is I don't feel bad that people are signing these contracts. I, I feel for them and I understand. And at the same time, I can understand why neighbors are sitting there going, I don't want ten acres of solar panels sitting there baking, you know, my dog in the yard or whatever. I don't know if that really happens, but that, we just had that Mojave Desert closure after eleven years. So I just want to start with that and just want people to know that we're trying to do everything we can to make this as fair and just for the consumers as possible. Now, that being said, and I'm not trying to take up everyone's time, I've got a couple of things here. We're talking about a hundred megawatt facility and the picture that you showed in your presentation looked like a massive facility crunched into one area.
Yeah, that, I can scoot back to that.
That'd be great.
Well, this, I, again, and I apologize, I don't know if this is the Badger Hollow or this is the one in Wood County, and I can't remember the name. But you can see, I mean, I, I tend to look at like what the forties are of the farmland and you can see how the forties are filled up. And when we're talking about, I, what is it, six, five thousand acres?
Five thousand out of forty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you can take this and then, you know.
So how many contracts is a, is a typical three hundred and fifty megawatt facility comprised of? I mean, these look like contiguous land parcels making up this picture here.
That's a great question and I don't know. I'm not sure. I mean, it, I'm trying to think if I could even ballpark that.
I mean, I think it's a good question to, to explore because we're not talking about three hundred and fifty or six hundred and fifty megawatts concentrated in a contiguous area. We're talking about forty to fifty thousand acres and a spattering of four to five thousand acres with multiple contracts between the landowner and Excel Energy at this point. So we're, what we're looking at is, in my opinion, if I'm looking at this, we're not looking at a three hundred and fifty megawatt or a six hundred and fifty megawatt facility. We're looking at a conglomerate of five, one, seven, point five. In my, and the way I'm looking at this, that falls under our jurisdiction, not PSC. So I think we need to take a look at that and see how that falls into play. Because I think the way it seems, this might be unique in how they're going about this, trying to fit this into St. Croix County. So I, just to, so go ahead, you're the expert, I'm not.
Are you, are you saying that they are going to be made up of smaller systems over, you know, such a wide area of land?
Yes.
And so look at, so essentially we would be saying that the, each individual system is its own independent system.
I would think that we should look at it from that, that case because there's no way there, without transmission lines being built between them and to the main, those are multiple transmitting facilities, not a contiguous facility using one transmission line to get back to the main transmission line. So I, I just, I don't know, something to think about, just looking at this and the different examples that we're seeing across the country. It's like, those seem to be, all be contiguous.
Yeah, I think, and that's where we go back to the definition of solar energy system in chapter thirteen of the statutes. And to what extent do we look at it as an independent or as a holistic unit? Is it just by connecting with those transmission lines? Is it, you know, what is it that makes it a, a system, a capital S system? I mean, and I certainly don't know the engineering of this project at all. But I would, I would think that, you know, Excel would take the position that, no, this is, this is an, an integrated network of one system and it's not individualized pieces. So it can fit, you know, within their, within their system plan as a whole. But it, I mean, it's certainly, it's something to think about and, you know, something to, to talk to your corporation counsel about. And, you know, as more, you know, more details of the plans come forward. I mean, that's, I think that's, I mean, I give you kudos for the creativity of it, too, to, you know, from looking at it from a different standpoint. And it does make sense within the context of the number of acres that were men, was mentioned in the last meeting. I mean, I think it was like, you, you, was it like fifty thousand acres?
It's forty or fifty thousand and then four, it was four or five thousand. I don't know. I have my fours and fives mixed up on that maybe, but it's within ballpark-ish.
Because I was trying to, as I was listening to the meeting, I was doing the math. I'm like, well, is it fifty thousand? Because that's like, you know, ten percent of your county. Or is it, you know, five? I mean, there's a, there's a big difference there.
Yeah.
So, no, I, again, I, I think if they're going to be, I don't want to say tying up, but if they're going to have a leasehold interest on that much land, but then the actual panels are only going to be on, you know, a tenth of that, you know, certainly that's something that, you know, to look at in more detail.
Yeah, and there's some other things I'd, I'd like to bring up. One, I'd, I'd like to see what the last three applications were to the PSC regarding solar facilities and what the criteria was and what the report was that came with it. I don't know if we can get that and then so we can look at it and understand what it is that they're even looking for. And, and so I think that would be important for us, at least to be able to explain to our neighbors, like this is the process and this is what it looks like. Not that I'm not going to load it into ChatGPT and have it summarize it for me, but I'm, I might, so.
I would love to see what ChatGPT does with the PSC process.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, it's, it's wild.
I, I'll just give you my warning right there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, it's been used many times. So the other thing is, are we able to pass a resolution from this board just asking Excel Energy to look at alternate means and work with us on that? Are we able to pass a resolution saying that? And is that step outs, does that fall inside the, you can't put in your comprehensive plan, no solar? You know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Is it step beyond what we should be doing and does that go against state statute?
I would defer to your corporation counsel on that.
And that, that could be answered another time. That doesn't have, has to be answered tonight because we got a lot to go through and, you know, I don't want to take up too much time.
There's a lot of layers in, in that type of a resolution. So I wouldn't, you know, want to give my two cents without talking with your corp counsel.
Yep, and then, actually, I hit a button here and I normally don't do that. So does the PSC take into consideration municipalities, like comprehensive plans? And so like you've got, you've got the city of New Richmond and some of that, but not overly close to a lot of where it's proposed that I'm aware of. Maybe I'm wrong, but I know like Village of Baldwin, Village of Hammond, those municipalities are impacted greatly on, could be impacted greatly on their ability to expand north inside their comprehensive plan. So this coming out of left field, how does that impact those municipalities? And is that taken into consideration by the PSC?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to see if I can flip directly to.
And thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chair. If you need to cut me off, let me know, but I, I've got a few more.
The, okay, so in these slides right here is talking about the elements. It's in chapter one ninety-six point oh four one of the statutes, and this is the breakdown of it. And you'll see that it looks to the adverse impact on the environmental values, public health, welfare, et cetera. There is, I don't know if I even have it in here, but there's one specifically that goes to orderly land use. Let me see if I can quick find it and I can read it. So it, to answer your question, yes, the PSC is supposed to look at the underlying comprehensive plans and land use plans of the municipalities in which this development is going. And so that is one of the boxes they have to check.
Okay.
The extent to which that's done.
Well, that's why I'd like to see the last three that were approved because I want to see how deep they go on that. And, you know, they're, they're, aren't they compelled by law to look at that and consider that? Like they can't just, yep, we looked at it.
Yes, they are, they are, that is one of the statutory requirements that they look at that.
What, what stat, what statute guides the PSC?
There's several different in, within solar energy citing. We're under, it's mainly one ninety-six point four nine one. So a project of this size that's greater than one hundred megawatts, when we're talking about what the PSC is going to be looking at to issue that CPCN, that is one ninety-six four ninety-one. The other statute that is key is sixty-six oh four oh one, which is where the legal limitations are on your authority.
Yep.
And then there's also Wisconsin administrative codes that address and that go to PSC process. And then you've got all of the different regulatory statutes that apply to PSC as a regulatory state agency. There's, PSC is, it's very complicated. It's a very precise, particular area of the law. And I, I, that's why I give them credit for running a well-greased machine and doing the work that they do because it is very, very highly regulated. But when you look at all of those little elements and all of those boxes that they have to check, there's ones that hit very close to home and that we're talking about here. So it's not just one of ten boxes.
I've got two, two quick, hopefully quick, hopefully, quick questions. One, so the, a lot of the land that is looked at being used for this project are, fall under ag preservation, which does not allow for, you know, zoning, commercial zoning, like building actual, a steel shed to run a factory out of. Where, I'm, I'm trying to think of how to ask this the right way, but in one parcel of land, there, the, a neighbor is able to construct seven acres of steel and plastic, commercial use facilities or buildings. And in the parcel of land next to it, they are not allowed to do anything but plant or pasture. So where's the justice in that and how is that even, how's that even justified? Even in like the Supreme Court, like our state Supreme Court and being equal? Because it just doesn't seem right at all, that that, that, that a solar facility is allowed to be built on one parcel of land, but across the road, you can't do anything.
Well, I think if I'm understanding your question, are you saying that why is it fair that the solar facility can be built on both of those parcels when one is very restrictive?
Both of those parcels, yes, but the other, but the other parcel can't build a shed or a hydroelectric plant or, well, maybe they could do that.
Yeah, like a metal shed.
A metal, a metal shed to do, to have a machine shop.
I think what, if I had to put on my court of appeals hat, I think the response would be the state policy is that we encourage renewable energy. And so therefore, the, the desire to put forth renewable energy and that regulatory framework can overcome local zoning.
And I think the last one I can save for my corp counsel and let someone else. So thank you all for indulging me on that and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Shirley.
I have a couple of questions. Supervisor Burning took half of mine, so that's good. In our presentation from Excel, he mentioned that there's a phase one and a phase two of this project. But he seemed to kind of skirt the question about when they submit to PSC, if phase one and phase two is submitted at the same time and how they see that future expansion. What's your thoughts on that?
So what I heard, and that was a point that I listened to multiple times because I wanted to make sure I understood. From what I heard is that phase one is that the three hundred and fifty megawatts, thirty-five hundred acres. But their application is going to be for the full amount. So when they submit their application, it is going to be for the full six hundred megawatts, broken down into phases. So, and, and I, and I could be wrong, but my takeaway was that they are not going to be submitting multiple requests for CPCN. It's going to be one. And that's usually what applicants will do. Sometimes applicants will actually put multiple sites into one CPCN to try to, like, get it through. We see that in our southern area of our state more.
That's what I would assume they would do, too. It, it seemed as though he, he answered as though there were going to be two separate projects and submitted separately, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, and I, again, I would want him to clarify that, but that was my takeaway, is that they were in phases, but it was going to be one submittal to the PSC, for one CPCN, for the full project of all phases.
And then my other question, because it's the only county that I know that is in current lawsuit, what do you know of the Clark County lawsuit and do you think it's, has any merit?
I don't know anything about the Clark County lawsuit, actually. I just got a copy of the Clark, Clark County ordinance. So I, I can't speak to the litigation. But I will say, after reading the ordinance, I'm not surprised that there's litigation because there's, there is a lot in that, that ordinance. And I, you know, and I, as a former, well, I was a city official many years ago, but as a, like a formal local official, I get it. I get that, you know, this is your community and sometimes it is very attractive to put things in an ordinance, even if you are not confident that they are going to be legally upheld because you want to do something. You know, and so I, I don't pretend to know where Clark County was coming from, but I do understand, you know, the desire to have that type of ordinance. So no, I, I am not familiar with the litigation, though.
Supervisor Adams.
Thank you, Chair. Would you know if there is a battery energy storage system that is a part of the Ten Mile Creek Plan?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know. From what I could review online, I couldn't tell if there was. And I don't recall from the presentation whether there was any. I think he said there wasn't as part of the phase one, but whether it was part of the full project, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, though, for six hundred and fifty, I mean, I would think there probably is going to be one.
Right, and, and I think you're correct there because in just doing some research, it looks like they're going to have a lithium ion battery pack system as a part of the overall project. So we know what happens when lithium ion batteries catch on fire, if they do. In Moss Creek, California, I think that, that plant that makes those is still smoldering and that took a long time and a lot of water to put out that fire. Same thing with all the EV cars in the California fires, they're having to deal with that. Seems like a big safety issue for rural Wisconsin. Seems like a big safety issue for rural Wisconsin to come up with water to possibly put out a lithium ion runaway fire. And then you've got all the air pollution, you've got all that pollution falling on the ground and polluting our soil. Is that being taken into account by the PFC, uh, the SC?
It sure should be. Um, and an emergency response plan is a very important element of the total package of a development. Um, and a, a emergency response plan is required in one of those boxes to be checked at the PSC level. Um, in my experience, there is dialogue, um, with, uh, you know, our, our county's emergency management teams and first responders and, and groups. Um, but again, to start those dialogues early, um, because you want to get as many assurances as you possibly can, um, when it comes to those emergency response plans and get those into a joint development agreement, if possible, uh, before you get the, before the CPCN is issued.
I mean, it really sounds like this is gonna happen come hell or high water. I mean, is that what your impression is, what you've seen, that all these have passed?
I think that, given the extent to which counties are forbidden to regulate and preempted by state statutes and the seemingly policy direction right now, um, of, you know, being carbon free by 2050 or, I can't remember the slogan name. I mean, yeah, these are, these are flying through PSC. Um, and so again, you know, the best advice that we can give are these pointers of being engaged and getting involved early and, um, you know, having the communications. Try to get as good of a joint development agreement as you can. One item that I briefly touched on was that, you know, making sure your voice is heard at the PSC. Um, one thing that Andy Phillips, you know, my partner, we've actually talked about is, um, you know, to what extent do counties want to be involved formally in that process? And I won't be surprised if we see some counties becoming more active participants as intervening parties in those processes to make sure their voices are heard. So, mm-hmm.
Supervisor Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's exactly what my question was. For our constituents, when we have our conversations with them, thank you, that's what I've been hearing from you as our pointers and from Excel, is what do they do and how do we do it? It's in that public input part that I think we all should focus on, or they should, and maybe we have some more alternatives, but if I was a landowner, it's my understanding that I can do what I want with my land as long as I don't adversely affect the quality of life of my neighboring landowners. And in that sentence, we're defining adverse. So as the public moves forward, I see we should not focus on feelings, but on facts of what you see coming down the road and how it's gonna adversely affect you. I think that will get the public, PFCs, whatever they're in, their attention. And, because if they, if we just throw them with a bunch of feelings, they'll ignore it.
Oh, absolutely.
But if we specify the safety and the quality of life issues specifically, then I think we're onto something. So I think that's the homework that maybe our constituents, we can share with our constituents to have, um, and we can come up with conditions to accommodate them. Because I don't, I don't think it's gonna be heard, uh, if we talk feelings, we talk facts. And what, uh, what adverse means? What is adverse? Does that sound like a way to go?
Yeah, I mean, those are good points.
Any other, any other, uh, coaching or, uh, clues or pointers you can give our, our constituents?
Um, again, I have to be careful, because as legal counsel...
Yeah, yeah, as far as, the public input was one.
Um, to, to the constituents. Um, but I think from what I can tell from what they're doing so far, they're making their voices heard, which I think is, is fantastic. And that's, you know, the, the beauty of our country, right? Um, so I think those are all very good things. Um, you know, they certainly can, you know, consult with their own legal counsel. Um, they can, um, you know, look to other professional resources, whether it be engineering resources, things of that nature, um, for further insight, they can do, they can do those things as well. Um, but I, again, I think, you know, what they're, that grassroots movement, I think is, is a good, good start.
Just one other. Supervisor Connor.
Thank you. A couple of things, I, you know, as they develop this, of course, they typically, they, people will look for the easiest development, is of course the best flat farmland. Uh, things that are real hilly or, or not as, uh, perfect for farmland is probably less likely to be developed for it. So that has a concern, especially after some of the things that, uh, Mr. Burning brought up. Um, one of the things that I also have concern about with this, on the construction side of it, is, uh, the types of units and the things that they put in for contamination for both land and water. So, you know, when we look at these, uh, on the makeup, you're looking at a product that's gonna be in the field for 20-plus years. And what happened, you know, look at an automobile after 20 years. You know, and then we're talking about things, are we gonna end up where, uh, these panels? What's the makeup of the panels? Um, are we gonna get leaching of PFAS or things that, uh, will contaminate our water? And, and some of these type of issues over time. And that was one of the questions you brought up, but didn't seem to have a answer. The, the same with even the, the product as far as, uh, how it's put together. Uh, the, are the metal components and the things, or the, is it a lead paint product? Or is it, uh, galvanization where over time they're going to leach also into the soils? One of the problems we have in, in St. Croix is some areas of the county are, are real susceptible with karst soils where we have, uh, real good paths to get down into our drinking water systems. And so that, that is a big concern over time. How are these things going to impact us? We're fairly sensitive to that with, in the, even the community development department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other is another big part of the county is also clay. So we have issues of, uh, runoff over, surface water runoff over to sensitive watersheds and things like that. So it's the makeup of these things in long term. Does the PSC do studies on this stuff and ensure that this is not going to be an issue in, say, 20, 25 years, 30 years?
Yes.
Life expectancy?
Yep, and I just flipped to this, the, the slide with respect to the environmental review. And as I mentioned before, you know, you hear the term environmental, I go to those contaminants. But again, the environmental review is really that holistic review. But part of that holistic review is the contaminants review. And the, the DNR does get involved in doing the analysis of those potential contaminants and what the impacts are going to be on groundwater and all of those elements. So as part of the environmental impact, um, analysis process, DNR will be involved in preparing those analyses and that information for PSC to consider. And then again, it's a matter of staying involved and knowing what, you know, uh, DNR concludes and looking at that information and, and does it make sense? Is it rational? Do we need to have PSC look at it or add a different condition to their approval? You know, all of those types of questions. But yes, to, to specifically answer your question, that, those elements that you articulated are part of the PSC review, as part of the environmental impact review.
Then do they make those available for everyone to see the actual makeup to ensure that?
Yes.
Where that's at?
Yes, they do.
Supervisor Rice.
Um, yes, um, most of us don't spend much time thinking about where electricity comes from. And we've opened, I think, getting a, a quick study. Um, while my, my question is smaller in scale than some of the topics that have been brought up, we heard from some constituents that they're really bothered with the idea that, uh, they built or bought next to what they thought was farmland and now looking out their back door or even front door, they're gonna see potentially glass panels in the future. Um, have you seen, uh, any situations where, uh, the PSP, uh, PSC has allowed for a requirement where for those communities, um, hillside berms and other things can be built so that the visual, uh, for the landowner isn't quite so jarring?
Yes, yes. Um, and those, there's two kind of options there. You can build those into a joint development agreement. Um, and so get to an understanding, you know, with the, with the developer, with the utility, um, that those are needed. Um, and, uh, again, start those, those discussions early to really, you know, hammer home that these are really important elements, you know, to these residents. Um, and try to get them to agree to those, um, uh, you know, the, those, whether it be the berm or the landscaping or the, um, you know, some, um, natural features that can, um, kind of minimize the impact of, of the development. Um, another option is that when PSC is making its approval, it can place conditions upon its approval. Um, so it can, it could add conditions like additional screening or additional berming. They don't usually get into that level of granular detail, but they could. Um, and again, and, and that's where it becomes important to make the voices known at the PSC and, you know, to, to possibly have as loud of a seat at the table as possible.
Thank you.
Any other final questions? Uh, Supervisor Connor?
Thank you. Um, and pulling off from what Supervisor Adams was talking about with the lithium, um, is part of that joint development agreement, can you also have, uh, a coverage that, uh, that if there was a lithium fire, something that they would be fully liable and responsible for all efforts and cleanup process and hold the, hold the communities harmless?
Yes, that would certainly be something that we would advise be asked for in that, that agreement. Absolutely.
Okay, um, thank you, Rebecca. You have no idea how much we appreciate your time and the information is fabulous. Um, I was kind of planning on waiting until the end where a request for future agenda items, but I'd like to at least maybe suggest, um, a path forward. And then if that's appropriate. Um, a couple of things I heard, I, I think that it, it would, um, be important for us to task our community development department or committee with, uh, compiling a list, so to speak, of really our major concerns and what we really feel is important for the PSC to consider. We've heard a lot of environmental concerns. Those are the kind of things that we need to make sure that we're starting a conversation with the PSC and engaging them right away. And secondly, I think it would be worthwhile for us to, uh, engage, um, Excel Energy and, uh, start thinking about these joint development agreements. Uh, it sounds like that might be inevitable, but the sooner we can begin discussions with them on that and get some of the municipalities involved in that, I think the better. So those are the two things that I think I'm suggesting uh, might be appropriate for us to get started on right away. Supervisor Shirley.
I think before we engage with Excel, I think it would be more beneficial for us to have some kind of a joint meeting with the Village of Baldwin, Village of Hammond and ourselves before we even go down that road of, uh, Excel.
Yeah, I, I was just suggesting we need to make sure that they know that we're interested in discussing with them. So alert them to the fact that we're not gonna go quietly. Does that sound reasonable? I know it's, it's very simplistic, but Supervisor Teljon.
And not just villages, but the townships also.
Does that sound, uh, reasonable? I'm getting nodding heads, so, okay. Thank you again, Rebecca. Appreciate it. We might be in touch with you again. Is that a possibility? Okay, we're gonna, uh, run through the rest of our business items. I think we're gonna go pretty quickly here so we can wrap up. Um, we're gonna move on to our second business item, ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter Three uh, regarding, uh, delegating power to acquire, manage and self, uh, tax-deeded lands of the St. Croix County Code of Ordinances. Supervisor Burning?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, uh, ordinance...
Need a motion first?
A motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter Three, ordnance, ordinance delegating power to acquire, manage and sell tax-deed lands of St. Croix County Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Uh, Supervisor Anderson, second. Uh, now...
Yes, sorry, thank you. I jumped the gun there. It's been a long night. All right, so this ordinance is, we've gone through a couple of exercises in admin in selling off, um, small little parcels of land, and this is just to help continue to clean that up. A very standard, very SOP, so nothing complicated.
Anything you'd like to add, Corporation Counsel?
Uh, just that the changes that are in the proposed, uh, repeal and recreated ordinance are consistent with 2023 Wisconsin Act 207, which modified Wisconsin statute, Chapter 75.
Questions, discussion? Any questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the, uh, ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter Three, the St. Croix County Code of Ordinances, and I believe we're ready to vote. Uh, thank you, that passes unanimously. Uh, the next item is a resolution amending the 2025 budget. Supervisor Burning?
Yep, I'll make a, uh, motion to approve resolution amending the 2025 budget reallocation uh, of the, for the substance use counselor to mental health therapists. Sorry.
Good. Uh, second Supervisor Connor. Uh, can we have an explanation?
Yeah, I can, I can take it and if anyone want, if Audrey wants to clarify. But really what this is, is instead of using grant dollars to offset the cost of changing the classification of this employee, we're utilizing fund balance and amending the budget so that the grant money can be used to help deliver the services more efficiently.
Questions, clarif, or, uh, questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion?
Wait a minute, Audrey said it's not right. I can't be wrong.
Oh, okay. Well, we can always ask, uh, Audrey to clarify if, uh, she seems...
Kind of, yeah. Um, mainly we, right, it's a reallocation of the FTE from substance use counselor to mental health therapist. Uh, the funding part of it, we are using grant funding, because there is a cost difference between those two positions. Mental health therapists are higher on the wage grid than the substance use counselor. So moving that position up on the wage grid is going to cost more money, uh, in wages. So the 2025 budget impact is going to be covered by the QTT grant. Future costs, because that's, grant can only be used for transitioning someone into that role. So future costs would have to be covered then by tax levy. So... And the what? Sure.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Connor?
I think one of the other things that you brought up in it too is that with this new position, if I understood you right, that it has a higher, uh, collection rate back for the future too. So, um, because of their position and their qualifications, when we charge it out, their services out, we will be able to recoup a higher rate for the services.
Right, yep. As a mental health therapist, the reimbursement rate is higher than if... As a mental health therapist, the reimbursement rate is higher than if she stayed as a substance use counselor. Yes.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend the 2025 budget as described. Okay, thank you, that passes unanimously. And our last business item, adopting 2025 to 2028 library plan of services. Supervisor Burning?
And make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2025 to the 2028 library plan of services.
And second Supervisor Shirley. Who would like to?
Supervisor Burning fully knows this one. But the library plan of service is the county's library plan. It's done every four years. It basically says that we're going to fund libraries at 100%. So it's really pretty standard. Other than, Ifilis has given me a little bit of flack over the process we use because we got rid of the library planning committee, which they say we can't do. Corp Counsel says we can. So I'm going to recommend that you just go ahead and approve the plan and make Ifilis provide me with more details of why our process was incorrect. If they can prove that to me, you may see it back here with a different process used. But anyways, the plan itself won't change. And it's just saying we fund libraries at 100%.
Questions, discussion? Any questions? Okay, the motion on the floor is to resolution, approve the resolution adopting the library plan of services. Thank you, that passes unanimously. That concludes our business items. And finally, we have one department report. I'd like to introduce our 2024 Badger State Sheriff of the Year. And I apologize for the delay, but it, we did have a topic that we really needed to hash through. So thank you for your patience.
Yes, very important topic, and thank you very much for that. 2024 year and report. We gathered about 16, 17 pages of activities within the sheriff's office for 2024. As you can see, each division has continued to remain active. Some increasing with the jail. Some other challenges that we continue to work through and overcome. But instead of me filibustering through all of this, Paul, I am going to open to any other areas that you want to direct it to. And I will do my very best to explain or answer those questions.
Any questions? I'm sorry, oh, okay, she disappeared from, oh, there she is. Okay, Supervisor Leaf.
I haven't disappeared, not totally. Anyway, Sheriff, I was wondering how the behavioral health counselors, the coresponders, if that, how that was still going for you all?
That's going very well. They are utilized quite often. That's, I believe, a statistic more kept with HHS because of the different areas they go into, such as Hudson, North Hudson. But as far as our utilization, it is quite often and they're many times even deployed before we get there. When we're going to something, we'll say if there's a BH unit, behavioral health unit on, if they can start that way to that residence. So we are utilizing them quite often. That has been quite a benefit. I'm very glad that that was maintained with the referendum.
Thank you.
One of the questions prior to, that I will touch on, was an inquiry of jail population and specifically the makeup of those that are within the facility. So we just took a snapshot yesterday of the jail population, which was at 126 inmates. Sentenced, there was 21 serving a sentence within the jail. Unsentenced, there was 41. 63 were in on probation. And one other, and on another agency, and that was one of the challenging incarceration out of New Richmond, we were holding one. So that made up the population yesterday. I'll jump back to the sentenced portion of it, of the 21. There was eight, there were eight serving a sentence alcohol-related. There were three serving a sentence drug-related. Two domestic-related. Three theft-related, and five that were other. Unsentenced, those awaiting either their day, maybe they were here on, still being held on a bond. Either a cash bond, signature bond, refused to sign a bond. There were, for unsentenced of that 41, 24 were here on felony charges. One was on a misdemeanor. Five were on OWIs, and 11 were on domestics. For probation, there were 16 that were serving a sanction. Eight unconditional charge, or conditional time. 39 were serving sanctions plus new charges. And of those in serving a sanction plus a new charge as a result of probation, of those 39, 15 were drug-related, six were alcohol-related, nine were domestic-related, and nine were other. So one, one of the questions was, oh, how many are serving on a domestic? Or are in on a domestic? We can come up with some numbers. What I caution is when we look at just domestic and how many were arrested on a domestic, there will be a domestic charge, and then there will be, they will be released on a bond prior to court. And if they violate terms of their bond, the rearrest violation would fall under our category of bail jump. So it wouldn't come back in under another domestic, it would come under bail jump. So as we kind of look at who's serving on what, it can be the underlying charge, but under different charges. So we'd have to drill down to, you know, same with OWI. Someone can be in on OWI, but a bail junk, a bail jump on a no-drink. They would come up under another bail-jumping charge, not necessarily a new OWI charge, so. To your question, I appreciate the, the heads up. So we started to drill down, and the more we drilled, it kind of spider-wed off. But we can come up with some good, some good statistics. JSS is another good avenue with Dr. Phil Golly compiling some of that and through CJCC. As we look forward to how our, what are our trends? Are they going up? You see, one of the numbers in there was jail bookings. 2,700 this year as opposed to 2,400 last year. And again, always as a reminder that the jail and the sheriff, merely the holding facility, the courts, what they're sentenced to, what their bonds are, are a different branch of government. I merely hold, hold and house. So.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Sheriff. Your report was very comprehensive, and I really appreciate the information.
And my thanks, Brent Standard and our command staff came up with all this for me. Came up with some good statistics, some good graphs that I know helped me as well. Appreciate the work that is done every day by each one of these divisions. So my thanks to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate this board. And that award was really on behalf. I was very honored and humbled to take that recognition really on behalf of our office, this colony and the community. So my thanks to all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, request for future agenda items. Any particular requests? County clerks report, correspondents, any announcements? Supervisor Rice.
I mentioned this before we started, but this hearkens back to something that we learned at the WCA conference. And that is projections of the state population. All of us should have received this forward analytics report that suggests that due to low birth weight, wait, birth rate, our population as a state is expected to decline over the next decade or so. So I think that's something that we should pay attention to as we're, we're not in a high-growth, 20% decade of our decade kind of environment anymore.
Any other announcements? Okay, it's 7:20, we are adjourned. Hey, I will. I was surprised, I thought we'd be going earlier.